Meeting is called to order at 7:04 PM. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss 2.1 personnel matter, teacher tenure, 2.2 board of ed matter, board officers?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, session.
We'll be done. We entered into executive session at 7:04 to discuss personnel personnel matter, teacher tenure, and board of ed matter, board officers. Can we all rise for the pleasure of this?
The President of the United States of America, into the Republic through which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any revisions to the agenda?
Nope.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? And can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
That was for business.
Business.
Special services.
Personnel, special services, yeah, sorry.
And then I get to say something really special just then.
I love that.
Uh, it's sad, though. I don't really like it. Lily Lee, our elementary Comen Hill teacher, second grade teacher, has announced that she is going to be retiring at the end of this school year. And I've known Lily a long time. Peggy's here as well. She is a phenomenal classroom teacher with enough energy and spirit to probably live a few more lifetimes of some other career, should she choose to. But that is beautiful for Lily. After so many years of dedication to Byram Hills, she raised her son through Byram Hills as well, who was my student at one point. And she's just been an incredible person to this community and to the school district. And we're very sad and slash happy at the same time for her. Congratulations to Lily on such a phenomenal career. We will have many more accolades to come at our retirement dinner and retirement celebrations at Coleman.
And now we have our... Oh, wait, I have other... Wait.
Something else really great happened. I forgot. First of all, I'm very happy that the board accepted a donation from the Feelen Charitable Fund. This was a student, Isabel, who was in Byram Hills. And the parents have donated money for the reflection garden that's in the front of the high school. We have students in our class at the high school who have been maintaining that garden along with our operations and maintenance staff. Chris Walsh has been helping to facilitate that. Isabel was an amazing student who passed in an untimely way and is remembered always in Byram Hills through her parents' dedication to giving money toward a beautiful garden in the front of the building. We now see many students in it, and it's really wonderful. So thank you to the Feelen family. And also, we accepted a donation, what was it, $42,000 or something, from Armon Babcat Baseball to support our high school baseball program. Pretty outstanding. So thank you so much for that.
When you look back over the last, like, 10 years, a lot of the sports leagues in town have been very generous.
Beyond generous, yeah. So thank you very much.
Now to the reason we have packed house, our special report, the presentation of the administration's proposed 2024-25 budget.
Yes. First, I would like to start by thanking the Board of Education. We have done some pre-meetings with Finance Advisory Committee, with Audit Committee, and with a very deep and focused, very long work session with the Board of Education to really look at this year's budget and to look at five-year projections for the district. I feel that every single board member has had a very intricate and invested role in looking at this budget, particularly Scott Levy, who is on the Finance Advisory Committee and also a very deep background in finance, which is a testament to why our district is the way it is. You've been here a long time and you've helped us so much with that. We have systems in place, and we have reviews in place. And a lot of that took place because Scott was asking the right questions at the right time. So I want to thank you for that because it's a really solid system that we have, and we've worked very hard with this budget. All of the administrators who are here tonight, I want to thank you for coming. So many of you have had so many late nights, whether it's child meetings, all of the sports activities that you've been attending. And if you could sleep with your eyes open, Rob Kastagnan, you go right ahead because I will not even graduate. Yeah, all of the different events that are occurring, Mark with Fine Arts and everything that's happening this week. Deb, I know you were at Science Olympiad last weekend. Just so many people here, Chris Walsh at every high school event imaginable. You spend so much time with our kids and with their families and in the evenings. And the fact that you are here tonight, not to participate but just to hear about a budget, is a testament to this district that you support what we're trying to do for kids. So I want to thank you all for all of this time away from your own families, just to be here to support everything that we're going to do. So thank you, and thank you for the work that went into putting these budgets together and the continued work that we have going on. They all know this presentation already because we covered it in the straight of council meetings. So they're just here to look good, all right? Right, and participate.
And you do.
And Lori Cannon.
And so we've been through January 16th, we've been through January 23rd. March 5th, our administration's proposed budget. March 19th will be budget hearing two. March, I mean, sorry, April 2nd. Oh, that's even better. April 2nd, budget hearing three. April 16th, 2024 will be budget hearing four, which is the final proposed budget. April 30th, 2024 will be the budget adoption. May 7th, 2024, budget hearing five, we'll review of the proposed budget. And on May 21st, 2024, I'm not telling you how to vote, but please come out and vote for the budget vote at HCC Crittenden Middle School from 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM. Will there be car people there?
Um, probably. I'll check with the PTSA.
We'll have more.
More information. Sometimes the PTSA will stay outside with children in cars so parents can go in to vote. And also, if you can go back, Kelly, for a second, it is the second.
Sorry, on the May 21st is also the trustee vote, which is for two, there are two spots available for the Board of Ed as well.
And also, budget hearing two on March 19th and budget hearing three on April 2nd are the last two times for the community to have any input to the budget. So if you had any input, that is the time you would do that. All right, Kelly? Good memory. All right, so we have budget guidelines that we follow every single year. We're looking at enrollment. We're looking at board goals, which, tonight I have a 10-page document to go over with the board that includes all of the bullet points of how the board has been achieving their goals this year. This is a very extensive document, and this is our playbook for the year. So it really guides our budget process. We're looking at our programs and facilities, of course, staffing and compliance, revenue and expenditures, which comes at a later board meeting, debt service and investments. Remember, that's the bond, the one remaining bond that we have left for debt service. There was a time where we had three. And facilities needs, and then replacement of equipment. So that guides the budget as we're developing. Our budget for the 2024-2025 school year is $103,464,726. That is a budget-to-budget increase of 3.75% or 3.7-plus million dollars. Go ahead, Kelly. So what do we do when we're putting that budget together? As I said, we're really looking at enrollment. We're really looking at previous budgets. We're looking at current needs. We have to deal with staffing and contractual obligations. So sometimes when we're looking at a budget-to-budget increase, we're looking at some of those mandated costs. For example, health insurance was up 10% this year. That is a mandated cost. So that is something we don't necessarily have, we don't at all have control over. TRS, Teachers Retirement System, ERS, Employee Retirement System for CSEA employees. Percentages that are going to be put into those funds are also something that are out of our control. All right. This is a nod to my predecessor. So it was actually my predecessor's... I actually think at the time that this was written, every student K-11 will have the opportunities afforded our graduating seniors. I don't think we had the internet then. I really think it may have been back this far. But that was always the guiding light for Byram Hills, that we want to make sure that what our children have now, that future children will have those same opportunities. And what has happened in Byram Hills over the past couple of decades is we've recognized that we want our kindergarten students to have better and greater experiences than our graduating seniors because we want to make sure that we are watching and learning about teaching and learning and curriculum. And we want to make sure that we are meeting kids' needs and the needs of the world. We don't always know when a student's in kindergarten what jobs are going to be available to them. There are kids who, when they were in kindergarten, we didn't talk about biomedical engineering. We didn't talk about, right, computer coding. We didn't talk about all of these things. But we knew that we had to stay on top of what was happening in emerging markets in the world in order to best prepare our students to get there. And that is our goal, so that we will have better opportunities than afforded our graduating seniors because we are remaining updated with the times. And also, I really encourage you to go to the website under Curriculum and Instruction and look at the work under Academic Departments. Tim has spent a lot of time there with our chairs, directors, and principals. And that is a go-to place for everyone in the district. Additionally, we have a special recognition document, which I encourage the public to go to our website to look at. And that really shows all of the accolades afforded to our students and to our faculty for the hard work that they've been doing over the course of the past year. And it is pretty spectacular. Right, district enrollment. We have seen, if you take a look at the 2,261 students in 2021, we are anticipating 2,356 students by 24-25. We also know that we have quite a few home developments, Airport Campus, Mariani Gardens. We have the new townhouses and apartments that are going up right near Crittenden and a bunch of others that are being developed in the town. I think there was something like 361 properties that I had counted in addition to all of those larger townhome and units. So when we're looking at projections out to 28-29, and our demographers report is pretty accurate, we have no idea what's going to be coming out of those new housing complexes as well. So building by building, you'll see fluctuations in the square box in the middle. You will see blue, the Comen Hill, Wampus, Crittenden, and then the high school. You'll see that the high school is at 740 right now, estimated to go to 747. Then you'll see numbers dropping in the high school over those years. But you don't see our enrollment dropping because we are increasing the number of kids in the elementary levels. Remember, we also in kindergarten started for a few years with going from seven or eight sections to 10 sections because we have been increasing our enrollment at those ages. And what does it include? All the programs and services that have supported student success, whether it is programs in enrichment, in math enrichment at an elementary level, all the way up to an entrepreneurship program at the high school. This is what the budget supports. All of our state federally mandated programs, our athletic programs remain. I want to say they don't just remain, they have expanded. We have a lot of expanded teams, flag football for girls, a lot of mergers with ice hockey, with golf, any opportunity that we can get. And you'll see an increase in the athletics budget later, and that is why. And what do we want for our Byram Hills students? Whether we have students in mock trial today, or we have students who are participating in our athletic events, or in Mamma Mia this week, it's so important as these children are growing up that they have opportunities to stay connected to their community and their schools. And that's what we're affording them through these extra programs. And all transportation services remain, which is something that we are grateful that we have our own bus fleet and we are able to better facilitate students going back and forth to events. And we have the very receptive Phil Peterson down at the bus garage, who is really working with everyone to make sure that everybody can get where they need to go. And you know what? Kelly, I know. There was a day where I used to do it all, but now I won't.
Great, thank you, Jen. So the budget is broken up into three categories, three components for the state end. Program, capital, administrative. Your program budget, which is about 73%, 72.7% this year, is it your teachers, your teacher aides, your psychologists, your guidance, your nurses, psychologists, everybody that interacts with students essentially on a daily basis, your bus drivers as well. So it's their salary, their benefits, any supplies, equipment, contractual that they have. That's the majority of our budget. School district, usually the program is obviously the biggest portion of it. Usually between 70 and 80% of your total budget. Maybe higher for other districts because they don't have their own transportation or other factors. So for us, it's 72.7% this year. Capital includes your salary, again, salary benefits, equipment, supplies for your operation maintenance staff, your custodians, your maintenance staff, as well as your utilities, debt service, safety, security, insurance, everything related to essentially our buildings. And that's 15.4%. Again, pretty similar on a year-to-year basis, and percentages are pretty consistent. And then finally, administrative, that's everything that's supervisory of the school district, your board of ed costs, your building costs, your central office, your legal costs, auditing, everything kind of supportive and administrative, and that's 11.9% this year. So just a little breakdown of the program. Again, the largest portion of our budget is program. I'll just jump through a couple of these slides, and if you have any questions, please stop me. Just our regular increase in terms of teaching staff, our regular teaching is at 1.7% on the top. Slight reduction in students with disability and ACD based on changes in staffing. Some other changes, basically, let's see, guidance, that decrease. So that increase is just based on the difference in the staffing on a year-to-year basis, based on what you budgeted last year, or this year, excuse me, going into next year. Small reductions in psychology, just based again on staffing as well. Jen mentioned athletics, 14% increase there. Again, that's essentially, and we have an amazing intermural program that's been, the last two years has really been picking up, so we've increased the staff there as well as the new programs we've added. Tonight, we did some mergers as well in women's ice hockey and something else.
Golf, skiing.
Skiing, yes. So some mergers there, some additional funds required after the budget to go forward on that. You'll see a pretty consistent number in terms of employee benefits, 6.6% in the program, which again is the biggest number. We had significant increases in our health insurance. Jen spoke about this earlier, over 10% for this year. Retirement costs went up as well for our teachers.
TRS, ERS, and healthcare, all on that line for everything, everybody related to program.
To program, correct.
And then the salaries are just in the respective lines.
Yep, salaries in the lines associated with it, correct.
And if you look at employee benefits at 6.6% and you look at the fact that we had a 10% increase in health insurance alone, at 6.6%, it's not matching that plus increases in contractual obligations because we have a certain number of teachers who are either reduced load or teachers who are retiring that we're not filling. So we can offset that cost a little bit.
And just probably worth mentioning, so on the students with disabilities line, where it's actually going down 1% but it's not because we're taking away services that students are getting in need, it's just rather, just maybe exploiting that line.
Yeah, it's just, Jen, you weren't, that's just a consolidation of, yeah, graduating students, the changes. Oh, changes in students coming in.
Yeah, we'll have students who are exiting out of a program because of age. And that will offset the price of special services. But all of our programs remain. And when feasible, we will either develop the programs for those students or we will find a place where we can take them, that they can receive those services. Yeah, good question.
And that can fluctuate on a year-to-year basis. You'll see that in previous years as well. Again, capital, 15.4% for this year, a 6.3% increase, but don't forget about that. I'll explain that. Obviously, the first two categories being the salary of the individuals that work in our facilities. Security, a slight decrease. That's based on a line we have every year for cameras. We've reduced that a little bit. We've got a lot of cameras the last couple of years. So I've reduced that line for next year slightly. Insurance, a 1.5% increase there. Transportation, I didn't put a percentage because last year we didn't purchase buses. Okay, so obviously I can't put 631,000% increase. So we didn't purchase buses last year. We're purchasing them this year, so that's 631. We're doing three buses and then two vans for next year. Okay, and then we're going to start to discuss the electrification of our buses. Obviously, the purchase of buses next year, the useful life of those buses will be before the mandate that the whole fleet has to be electrified, which is 2035. And we're hoping maybe some changes come with our legislatures in regards to in 2027, your required purchase, any new buses have to be electrified. So we're hoping for some changes in that. And I'll discuss with the board in the presentation regarding our plan for electrification of our fleet. But in terms of the budget, that's why that increases for next year. Again, benefits, 6% increase, you know, associated with this. This is mostly ERS staff, so non-teaching staff. And that went up from a percentage of 13.1% to 15.2%. So essentially, every dollar that they're paid, 15 cents would go towards the retirement. So that was a fairly large increase in terms of retirement costs. Small decrease in our debt service with two years remaining in our debt service payments. So, you know, it goes down as every year as the principal interest goes down. So a slight decrease, well, a large decrease, I'd say, 4.2%. And then a 10% increase in our cap plan. If you remember, last year we reduced that by $100,000. The cap plan is what we do on a yearly basis in the budget to maintain our buildings, whether it's replace a section of the roof or repair a boiler. So we've increased that again back up to the 1.1 million, which has always been in the past, just to maintain our buildings, based on the projects that we have for next year.
Thank you for bringing it back up.
Yes. It's an amazing thing. It's a reason we don't have all these, a lot of bond projects and a reason we don't have significant needs in our building. People defer maintenance on the building that causes big projects.
Thinking about our debt service right now and the current bond that we have that was taken out when I was in my twenties, and we're still paying that for, and that was for expansion. Byram Hills did that because we were growing in population and we were actually growing the physical footprint of our buildings. We don't want to do it. Other places are having to do it because they're having to take care of deferred maintenance. So we don't want to ever have to do that.
And the final administrative, almost 12%, 11.9% of our budget. Just some highlights here. Board, consistent, haven't we increased the board's percentage going forward? An increase in the curriculum development, 21%. That's associated with the new position that was approved tonight, the Elementary Curriculum Chairperson, so. Just to be clear, the Board of Education is not.
We do not get paid. You don't get $12,000 each?
That's associated with having these meetings, or doing professional development, supplies in the district.
Yes. We also have relationships, you know, with companies to help us keep updated on our board policies, all of these things, cost money, and they're in a board line.
Yes, good point. I'll say that next year, for sure. And then just the reductions, some small reductions and increase are based on changes in staffing on a year-to-year basis. A new line, which you didn't see in the past, is on the bottom here, leases. Based on GASB 75, which is the government accounting board, comes up with these fun things for accountants to do when they get bored, I guess. In the past, all the leases for our copiers were in building budgets, so it was in the program section. Now it's been required to, in the accounting portion, to put it in the administrative budget. So administrative budget is $116,000 more than it was last year, just based on that. No changes.
Regardless of whether it's attached to the programs or not.
Yeah, and, you know, every school has their own copier, so it was in the cost of a program that way, special ed as well. So it's a little shift there.
It's the biggest jump, right?
Just an accountability shift there. And then finally, again, employee benefits, 7% increase here.
That's the increase in healthcare?
Healthcare, yep. Health insurance, retirement costs, Medicare, FICA, yep. Large increase this year. It's a great segue into the mandated costs. Jen spoke about this a little bit. TRS went up from 9.76 to 10.02, so a fairly large increase. Remember, that's the majority of our staff, our teaching staff. And then again, employer retirements, I'm sorry, employer retirement system moved from 13.1 to 15.2. So pretty high retirement increases this year. And again, health insurance is over 10% for us as well. So that's a reason, a large reason for the increase in the budget this year, based on those changes.
And while we saw a 10% increase with statewide schools' cooperative health plan, my ship was, what, 15%? Budget increase, so.
Yeah, we've enjoyed some excellent increases, good increases for health insurance in the past couple of years.
We've seen as low as 1%.
Yeah, we were 1.5% years ago. It's finally kind of caught up to switch to. Still, a very good plan going forward. Some issues and concerns for public schools, this slide hasn't changed a lot, which is scary. We have added to it. Obviously, mandate relief, that's something we've been fighting for for many years. We haven't looked at any help so far. Federal tax law assault has been something we've been dealing with, especially in this area, for many years as well. Again, the conversion to electric buses, I could talk for hours about that, and the issues associated with that. But it's something at this point that we're going to have to start really pushing forward with, starting in 2027. So I have a presentation I'm reading to the board to talk about that discussion going forward. Again, it has to be completed, as of right now, by 2035. And again, we have 81 buses, so it's a big project, more to come.
And we have student mental health, which, you know, we have had guidance counselors required at the elementary level. A lot of that is, it's not a concern. We know it needs to be there. But it's something that's mandated that we don't get relief for. Also, school safety. We now have new requirements as far as threat assessment teams, et cetera. And a lot of schools are putting in very costly, as we are, cameras, security systems, that we're not receiving any mandate, any relief for. It's not mandated, but any relief for. And foundation aid, Scott, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little?
It's worth giving a bit of an update, just given that I know the PTSA has been a great partner in terms of just getting out to the community of voter voice just to try to make sure that our voice is heard in Albany around the budget. Because as was in the governor's budget that came out, you know, many weeks ago, we stand to lose about $400,000, a little over $400,000 in foundation aid this year, and then potentially another $400,000 next year, which, you know, is a significant amount of money for us because we only get just over $2 million in foundation aid to begin with, which is, you know, less than just a couple of percentage points of our budget. So we appreciate everybody doing that. And I think collectively, between Jen's work regionally and our work as a board regionally, we've probably, you know, seen every legislator, not just once but multiple times. And I think generally, our legislative delegation is on board to try to restore that money. We're not alone in this. Many districts around us are facing the same issue. And I think the question, you know, that pops up certainly from time to time as we talk to people in the community is, what does that mean for this year? What does that mean for the future if we do lose it? And hopefully we won't, and we won't know until April. But if we do lose it, I think that one thing to mention and just to allay some concern is that we are in a much better position this year than certainly many of the peer districts around us. I think it's already been public that there are a number of our peers that are going to be looking to go above the tax gap, which is not something that, you know, we feel would be necessary for us. And furthermore, as Jen said, the bond is coming off in a couple of years, which really does, you know, help our overall financial position, and so we will have no debt as a district. On the other hand, fast forward, you know, beyond this year, if we do lose $800,000 plus on an ongoing basis, year after year after year, very meaningful. And obviously, that would have implications just on how we manage the expenses and how we, you know, think about property taxes. So it's incredibly important for us to just fight as much as we can to, you know, get that aid into the budget. And hopefully, we won't lose it, but, you know, we're not going to unfortunately know for quite some time just the way the process works. And again, because many of our neighbors are going through the same thing. There's been strength in numbers in terms of really, you know, making sure that our voice is being heard.
And some other districts around us, I think it's going to be over 1.6 million. The Chappaqua is going to lose by the end of the second year in perpetuity. Mount Vernon is $5 million in perpetuity.
Yeah, Bedford is a big number.
Bedford is over $3 million or $3.5 million. So this is really hurting a lot of districts. There are very many districts in Westchester County that may be high wealth and also very high need, and they're not being considered in this option as well. So we have put out a voter voice, our PTSA, and our education foundation, and even the Byram Hills Preschool Association has been promoting this voter voice. Thank you to everybody who's written to Governor Holkel and CC'd our local legislators who have been very supportive about this. We have not heard anything back from the governor yet about the proposed budget. And if there will be any changes, we are expecting a budget April 1st, but I'm doubtful that that's going to happen on April 1st. It probably will be a delayed budget. So continue the letters in full force, and we hope to hear something back from the governor, and we'll report out to the community of them when we do.
Is it possible to do another blast with the community of the voter voice? There was a mock letter that went out. Is it possible?
Yeah, we have it on our website now. And I think that we've had significant traction from what I hear from our community. We'll have conversations about whether we think we want to press them again to do that.
And the PTSA and the BHF both have been great in terms of just...
They've been fantastic.
Yeah.
I think our legislatures have got the message, you know, we can push. I think our legislators have got the message, you know, pushing.
We don't want to lose our.
No, we're definitely good to keep our name in that as well. And then just other quick to regional cost index, the cost of doing business down in Westchester in terms of the formula. That needs to be adjusted, that's something we've been asking for a long time. And then revisions to the tax cap. That's something the governor has been very push off is on that. One specific thing is the consumer price index. So you hear two percent tax cap, I'm sure you heard that a million times, but for the past three years, it's been over two percent. This year it's four point one, last year it was eight percent. So any revision that can give a little more flexibility, the max we can do is two percent in terms of that formula. That would be a nice caveat to a change in the formula. But obviously, that hasn't, we haven't gained any traction on that in the past years. So you'll probably see that again next year as well. Something to consider going forward.
Yeah, and maybe, and of all these things, unless maybe the most meaningful could be mandate release, relief, which we're far away from in terms of the appetite to have the dialogue. But perhaps this year, with all of the issues that everybody's facing and potential cuts in aid, it sparks renewed interest in.
Yeah, fall off, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, it's incredibly important and at some point, it just needs to be tackled.
It's, it's the year of the red herring. Just throw out some red herrings and then we'll forget all those really important things we've been asking for the work on.
We have exciting things happening.
Exciting. So that presentation of the administration's proposed budget will be proposition one. When we ask the community to go out to vote, the proposition one will be on the budget itself. Proposition two, it's actually probably not going to be two. Two is going to be the board seats. We have two board seats that are coming up in this May, and people will have an opportunity to vote, to see who will fill those two for board seats. And then we will have proposition, this will probably be three. Byram Hills High School Lights Learning Action, a project proposed for two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty seven. Three phases. One, recreating the hallway, the library and the lecture hall at the high school to become the hub of Byram Hills High School and to be called the Learning Commons. Phase two is to do a second turf field at the high school, which is on the current football practice field. And phase three is field and court lighting for all of our fields. Phase one, keep going. Phase one, the Learning Commons. In two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the BHEF partnered with the district and they helped to redo the Coleman Hill Library. You can see that this is a learning space that our children have adapted to. That's a little playhouse in the back. There's an entire library behind them as well with adjustable seating and adjustable workspaces for kids. This is what happens to our kindergarten, first and second graders. By the time they go to Wampus in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the BHEF partnered with us to redo that library. That is only one snapshot of a much bigger picture of that room. It is phenomenal. Kelly and I were in there today when a class was taking place in there. Kids were grouped in different areas, some on beanbag chairs, some on, yeah. I mean, it was just, it's a phenomenal learning environment for kids, as you can see. And HCC was completed in two thousand nineteen, twenty in partnership with the BHEF. That is used for small and large groups and classes as well. Just an incredible working space. There's a maker space there. There are small tables with technology. And these kids from kindergarten through eighth grade have state of the art facilities that complement the teaching and learning that we have all worked so hard to give them. And then, when you get to the high school, that's what you get. Okay, and if you go into the high school, wow, this was really good in nineteen sixty eight. And I have a picture from nineteen sixty eight. It's exactly the same thing. I showed it to Chris Walsh yesterday. It is exactly the same picture. This is the current situation in the high school, which served us well during COVID and is not the case anymore. Our high school students are not having the opportunity to work in spaces where they can have small and large group and and just meeting the needs of the twenty first century learners. So this is the lecture hall across from the library, also of the same era. When you go inside, we do some cosmetic things from year to year, but this is not the way we have kids learn anymore. Drivers that we utilize this room and and we're kind of like sitting on tabletops and turning kids around to make it a useful room. Because other than driver education or maybe a guest speaker or a video conference, this is not the setup that we need for kids in high schools today. You look at the next one, it's just another picture of it. Go back and forward again. We're going to be stuck.
Oh, there we go. Oh, it's going to catch up.
We're going to be stuck in time.
Broken, oh my god.
So broken.
Prestiwart, okay.
All right. So I can keep going because you've seen what there is to see there. He'll pull up some renderings. So we have some renderings of what we hope the high school to look like. We have mapped out times. So the Board of Education, we're going to do like a, a little walk through the library spaces. I have multiple dates set up for the Board of Education, the Byram Hills Education Foundation, the PTSA, the faculty, staff and kids, and also the community, a full community night, where we are going to have people come and visit the high school, walk down the hallways. We will have Promethean boards with renderings of what that will look like, both outside of the library space to show the main hub and where the food kiosks and everything else will be. You can keep going through that. We're going to have state of the art technology. All right, so this is, this is what the lecture hall will look like. You'll notice that on the upper levels, we'll be, we'll be cutting out certain levels. So the upper levels will have tables where large groups, groups of six or so can meet to work together. We'll also have some spaces in the front. We'll have technology all around, just creating a better working environment for the students that we currently have now. We've got renderings of, that's going to be the entrance and where the kiosk is going to be. This is our main hub. Our kids are going to feel like they're on a college campus. This is going to be where they go to meet each other, to meet with teachers. It will be our central hub. And we currently don't have one in the high school. Keep going, Kelly. This will be on that main hallway as well, where the kiosk is. And you'll see these little rooms. Those will be at the edge of the library, glass enclosed rooms where students can work in small groups. And then the main hub where the librarian's kiosk is going to be. And just some more renderings of that. More sitting and learning spaces, some small rooms and large rooms. Then we'll have one more, which is a major, oh, this is the space, like this is more of a seating casual space that's going to have a lot of light to the outside. So they're not in the bunker in the library anymore. And this is two classrooms with a demountable wall. So we could have very large groups in there or two small groups or two regular class sizes. And this is my very favorite, doors that go outside from the library to a safe, enclosed space so the children can't get out and the animals can't get in, right? So we want something that is outdoors, but has a very decorative fence around it so that we can be sure to continue with our safety protocols and a place for students to go during lunch so that they can be outside or even with classes to work. Phase two, the turf field, this is our current field. The next one, you'll see the little practice football field. And now the third one here will be what they will look like together. And then the final phase of the project, which we estimate completion in two thousand twenty seven, is going to be lighting of all of our athletic facilities. And you will see that these lights are targeted lights. This is part of the reason we never did this before, because the lights would light up that field and this surrounding community like Westchester Airport, we don't want to do that. So these are more targeted lights. We've waited for the right technology. Just think of like that tankless hot water heater that you've all been waiting your entire lives for. This is where we feel about these lights. And here is a timeline of when that is going to be completed. And this does not even include the timeline of when everyone is going to go to the showcases at the high school, which I will show in my next report. So we are very excited about this proposition. And it will require that the public goes out to vote. This will be proposition three. And it is to use eight million dollars out of the capital reserve fund to do these much needed renovations at the high school. The capital reserve fund was taken out during the time I was superintendent. And the whole reason for that fund was to put away money to do major projects such as this. We were able to do a turf field that cost one point seven million dollars out of this capital reserve. And the track. Kelly has been very prudent with putting money into the capital reserve. On the regular reserves that we hold, that every district holds, the different budgetary items, Kelly was even able to take one point two million dollars worth of interest and put it into that capital reserve. So there are many ways that we have been able to solidify that eight million dollars that is in there. We're asking the public's approval to utilize it. And then we will begin a process again for any other major renovations. Prevents us from going out for a bond and in any opportunity that we can, besides our daily maintenance and yearly maintenance of our buildings, to put that money away for whenever that next day comes, so we don't have to go out for a bond again. And this is our timeline. So it's going to be like a flash, provided this gets adopted and people vote yes on this proposition. We are going to begin demolition next summer of the high school and the lecture hall. The lecture hall will be completed before kids return in September.
This.
This summer. Well, I say next summer, but this summer, yes. This summer. We'll begin with demolition and completion of the lecture hall. And then from September until probably January, but they tell us March, but they told me secretly in January. So sometime between January and March, we're anticipating that the high school library, Learning Commons, is finished. So our kids, hopefully, within six months, will be able to utilize that. So by two thousand twenty five in the summer, they are, we are now going to be creating the second turf field. So if you think about it, a student who shows up in two thousand twenty four, this coming September, to school, they're going to, they're going to see a different library. But by two thousand twenty five, they're going to see a whole new Learning Commons and a whole new turf field. So that's a lot of work to be happening in one year. Then we are going to be taking the additional two years to slowly but surely be putting in lights. Like we have to wait for the right time, the right money. We have to make sure policies are in place to really protect this community from itself. Meaning, right? We, we have lights, like, so why don't I go work out at ten o'clock? Because, right? You want to at least continue with the hard work we've been doing with Challenge Success to make sure that we are not overtaxing kids, that we are not creating a twenty four hour community where these kids are at practice at eight o'clock at night or only have night games. And, you know, we have to remember that these are our scholar athletes and we've spent a considerable amount of time with Stanford Challenge Success to make sure that we are doing it just right for them. And we can't blow it with the big birthday cake, right? So that's our plan. And to come, revenue presentations in the future, state aid, tax levy, fund balances and reserves, the equalization full value per town. Irish favorite. And estimated tax rates and true val, true value tax rate is really. And that is to come.
All right, I got this one off. March fifth. Oh, no, January, see, I don't. January twenty third was our first budget hearing where we did the five year fiscal trend analysis, property tax cap formula, principals overview. Tonight, March fifth, two thousand twenty four, we have the administration's proposed budget. March nineteenth, two thousand twenty four, we have budget hearing two. We're all here about programs for students with special needs, computer assisted instruction, art and music instruction, curriculum development.
Raise your hand if you're joining us that night.
Half our audience, thank you. April second, two thousand twenty four, budget hearing three, interdisciplinary athletics, operations and maintenance, transportation services and revenue. Again, many of you will be back. And that's the last time we can hear from the community about the proposed budget. April sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, we have budget hearing four, final proposed budget. And then, I can share. And then April thirtieth, budget adoption. May seventh, two thousand twenty four, budget hearing five, review of proposed budget. And May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, is the budget vote at HCC, middle school, six thirty to nine. And that is also when the trustees will be voted on and the proposition we just discussed will be voted on.
Thank you.
Presentation will be on the, on the website tomorrow. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to email me. I'd be happy to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And.
On that note, should we let everybody get home?
Go home, go home.
A very late night, so please go home to your families.
So I want you, you all look so tired. I want you to buddy up and text the other person when you hit home.
We're going to do a little flip on the agenda and we're going to discuss eleven point oh new business.
Okay.
Take it away.
Yeah, let, let me introduce. So I'll start. Thanks for being here, Christina. So in two thousand nineteen, the State Education Department revised the guidance on school counseling regulations. And in those revised regulations, they require that every district has a school, school counseling advisory committee. Did I get that correct? And also, they develop, every district has to develop a school advisory plan, which Christina has worked on. And she has convened and every year has held these committee meetings. Many of you have served on that school advisory committee. Christina's going to talk about that and summarize your work over the past few years. So we've asked Christina, it is required that she presents the plan and then he updates the plan every year. We also asked Christina to just give us a brief update on her work as well as talk about college admissions. And that's on everybody's mind, particularly right now and always on her mind. So thanks for being here tonight, Christina. And feel free, if you have questions along the way, jump in. This is meant to be a discussion as well.
So the, the guidance plan did come into effect in two thousand nineteen and it's really a plan that is looking at the whole child from many different angles. And I think the great thing about the plan is that it wants to ensure that every student has access to a, a school counselor, so K through top. And we obviously have done that. So the plan is great, it's up on our website. We update it every year. We make some minor changes to it, but for the most part, the plan, you know, is the plan. As part of the plan, though, is a, an advisory committee. So you can see the constituents up there, you know, the people that we have sitting on it. We have parents, we have students and their voice. I know for some of you that if it's out of that committee, the student's voice is so powerful, especially during the pandemic. If any of you remember that, those times we were asking students to talk with their fellow classmates, what's going on, what do you need, how can we help? And hearing that from the students was just invaluable.
And if I can just commend you that you continued to have these meetings during the pandemic.
Yes, yes.
Know how we did all that, but we did. And it was important to bring that in. Thank you for that.
Right, we didn't stop, but we felt it was even more important at that time to, to make sure that students were heard. And we have counselors, we have administrators, we have faculty. And the majority of you have served in some capacity or another on the committee. And so we thank you for that time and, and for your, your patience and just your great, your thoughtful thinking. And that's what we really needed in the advisory committee. And I think we've had that over the years. So we update, like I said, we update the plan every year. Not too much changes, but it is on our guidance website. This is a little progression of the topics that we have discussed. And this is in the advisory committee meetings. We have three meetings throughout the year and we have a theme for the year. And, you know, we went into it, I remember thinking, oh, this is great, the first year, we're going to have a great, you know, we're going to be super organized, we're going to come up with so many goals and everything. And then COVID hit, right? Right in the middle of that. And we just thought, you know, wow, for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, we have to take a deep dive and understand what the perspective is of our students during that time. What did they come out of that when we were still in it? What do they need? And how can we, as a school counseling department, do what is needed to be done to support students and, and, and help them? So that was a very, that was an invaluable time for the students on the committee to really give us the feedback. And so from there, that really led to students felt like they were ready to come back to school. But where, what did they belong to? But school was so different. It was, you know, it wasn't the same way that you make friends as you normally would. And there were just so many just different things to think about. So we spent a whole year talking about what does it mean to belong? And then that actually led into a discussion about leadership because leaders help people belong. So one thing kind of led into another and some great discussion. And we, we had, we put together some programs and some initiatives to help students. And then this year, we really decided to unpack the OECD data, which is some data from some students who took a test for us. And we got some.
Was that subset of PISA which I had presented to you previously?
So we're looking at some of the information that came out of that related to social, emotional learning and just kind of what our students' attitudes are around some different social, emotional topics. So that's five years. That went by really fast and we will start to think about a topic for next year. And I thank you again for your participation on that, on that committee. It's been wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, Christina.
So now, I can't come before the board now, I know, I just couldn't.
They were patiently waiting, waiting on that part, even though they're interested in it.
Especially all of us with juniors.
Yeah, we, we had already.
Yeah, we, we had already, we talked about it.
It matters.
She's gonna call that, no, don't worry.
So I, I just put together three slides because I'm sure you have more questions, happy to, you know, talk about uh what we know right now. Um, I'll give you a second to take a look at this graph.
Oh my. Whoa, wow.
In two thousand twenty.
Let that sink in for a minute.
So this, these are southern schools with an increase in Byram Hills applications.
Wow, wow.
And to be fair and to kind of set a, a perspective on this, a school like Syracuse or Binghamton, that is, you know, we have a number of students who'll apply there. That increase is about a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent. So while these numbers are excellent, understand that during this time, most schools, we've had about a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent um increase um in, in applications. But the southern schools, that's a different ballgame. And um, I believe it's the University of Florida there, which is, you know, what is that, four hundred?
What are we doing?
Yeah, um, four, four hundred percent is incredible.
Okay.
Until.
Speak to why you think that is happening, so we know that all of the applications are up even in our regular schools. But why the focus on the southern schools? Where do you think that's coming from?
So it, it's very interesting, I talked with the counselors about this, kind of to get their take on it, I think a number of things are happening with this. Um, certainly students want warmer weather, that's always something. But I do think social media has played um a big part of this with um Bama rush and sororities. And um, the big, students really want a big, bigger schools, the rah rah. And um, so they're looking south for that. But I also, I think that students kind of always wanted those larger institutions and it's getting harder to get into the schools that they would typically apply to, the Michigans and the Wisconsins. So they're having to look south to get that environment. And um, I think that's in part what's going on here. I think it's a number of things kind of coming together, but that, that's my best guess um about that. And I, I do think that parents and students are taking it seriously when we ask them to please cast a wider net when it comes to looking at colleges and universities, uh, you know, so that they have a better chance of getting it.
We're all casting them at the same schools.
Yeah.
I was actually gonna ask you how you help deflect, how, how do you help students and parents deflect that? So that when they're casting that wider net, they're casting it in a lot of different directions. Because I'm sure when you show this to parents or, or if you do or talk about it, that people are realizing so many more people are applying, so we need to look at other places, so.
You know, some, some families come in and they actually leave with that and it's great, you know, help us think differently about this process. We know that it's difficult, uh, we want something different for our child. Um, and then some, some families are very set, they know what they want. So I think it's, what I think the counselors do is they try to work with students and help them identify what it is about a particular school that they really like. And then try to find other colleges that could offer a similar um program. And um, if they can apply to at least one of those schools, uh, I think that's great. But it, it's definitely a, a battle um to find schools where the application numbers are not like that right now. A lot of that has to do with the test optional, policies that are in place um still that came into place with COVID. Um, and. But yeah, so kind of a lead into what's going on, what we're hearing about with reinstating the SAT and ACT. Yale and Dartmouth have come out recently to say that for the next um admission cycle, um, they are no longer test optional. So you have to submit an SAT or ACT score to these two colleges at this point. And actually this afternoon, Brown just announced that as well. So I expect to see more of this as um, we go through, you know, we finish up this admission cycle and there could be a lot more schools that are, are going to um, uh, doing away with test optional.
Yeah, it's pretty safe to assume that there're gonna be a lot more that go to required tests. And it goes back to, you know, Genai, maybe two, three months ago, we were at a regional uh event where there were uh a group of schools in New York that have a very different model and have for a long time, where they don't have any traditional tests. It's all um like oral exams at the end of classes. And there are elements of it that we do have in some of our high school courses, but to totally flip to that model, we did ask the question, well, what happens on standardized tests? And the answer was, well, our students don't necessarily take them and they don't necessarily do well on them. This is coming back.
And the college admissions was the same thing. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of this sway back to the testing is also the revelation that underserved kids who may not be scoring as high on these SAT and ACTs exams. The SAT and ACT are really good predictors of their success in college. Because despite the fact that they may not have had the courses, their achievement on those tests is so high.
Right.
Considering the education they received, that is a great indicator of their success later.
That, that's exactly what, what they found and what that, that study found is that those students that may not be, who are underrepresented uh may not be as high as maybe some other students, but along with their transcript, make a very compelling case for the student to be successful at their college or university. So that's really what is behind this.
Without the test, we might be missing those kids in this selection process for college.
Yes. Exactly. Exactly. So how will the class that's applying next year know now, like every day, something's coming up? Right. Is there gonna be a meeting at the end of the school year or right before?
Hmm.
But. It's, it's interesting, we do that, we also, there's um fairtest.org keeps track of it in real time. So if you go onto fairtest.org, any college or universities testing policy is on there, if they're test optional, they're on there. If they're not test optional, they're not on there. But um, it, you know, it's gonna be the type of thing where right now, we're working with our juniors during these college meetings. So we know about a few of them, so we can tell students about it, but more than likely, we would show like five more.
What happened to junior last year? Or ten more flip or something, or all those southern schools flip last year.
Yes.
They, they sort of have to tell you soon, I think, for this upcoming, yeah, so.
They do.
Mostly southern schools kept their testing, a lot of them, right?
Oh, they did.
Florida did it.
Georgia and Florida and kept them.
Yeah, Florida was, we replied, replied to this.
I think we're going to see this with the more competitive schools um for this year. And then I think other colleges and universities will have to see what effect it has on them in the, in the future years and see what they're gonna do. But I would imagine we're still going to have um uh test optional policies at a lot of uh larger um southern schools.
There are some nuances, it seems like though now with these um, the ability to substitute APs for SATs or ACTs, right?
Sure.
That's, that's new.
Right.
Um, I don't know again, how that'll impact our students.
Right.
But that's interesting to think of, to think about from a guidance perspective.
I think large health sector. By and large, our students submit um scores to colleges and universities, if not to all their colleges, at least to some. So we can kind of pick and choose which colleges receive those scores and which colleges don't. And um, some of our, our students really use that, but predominantly our students send their scores because they're typically uh very helpful in the college process, along with a rigorous curriculum with a transcript that is in alignment with the test scores. I think that that's always been the biggest strength of our students is there has been an alignment with grades on the transcript and alignment with an SAT or ACT score that would match.
That's interesting.
Match that.
So is that sort of a warning to an admissions counselor if in a school system where there's that disparity?
Correct.
Like the grades are high, but the standardized tests are low, that.
It makes them ask questions, they want to know more. And if you haven't explained that in your application anywhere, they're left with, and, and they're too busy to pick up the phone and really call and ask us, to be honest, so.
Making a sound. Right, so you're finding a high correlation in our district.
We're finding a high.
So saying a strong curriculum, a strong program, um, and the grades reflecting their standardized test scores.
Exactly.
Right.
Can I use that?
So this may be too, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, we have a lot of questions. Um, just to think back to those southern schools as I'm thinking about, you're saying this increasing um application. What are you seeing as far as admissions? Are you seeing a, some sort of commensurate increase in the numbers of kids that are getting in from our areas?
We're looking at that from the top.
Or is it working that way?
It's a great question. Um, what we're seeing initially is a lot of referrals. So I believe Clemson, I think they deferred everybody this year and right now we're at fifty percent acceptance.
So are they gauging interest? Is that what, what the schools are saying they're doing?
Um, I think so, I think it's the luxury of having so many applications, they can do that, they wanna really see who, who's going to commit early on and then they can go ahead and, you know, open more. But I think all of our students were deferred initially at Clemson and I, as I checked today, we were at fifty percent acceptance rate. So we're.
Oh, so they roll in.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It may be too, it is probably too soon to know the answer to this question, but it'll be interesting over the next couple of months to, to assess it. With COVID and test optional, there was a real sea change in admissions, right?
Yes.
Like all the assumptions that everyone had, had changed.
Yes.
With the Supreme Court case, it's unclear whether that's going to change things dramatically or, or not, I don't know. But I mean, I, I, do you have a process to kind of look at this year versus other years, figure out, hmm, you know, what changed, what didn't? I know you always talk to some of the schools to get feedback and then just like be ready for our students to advise them well next year?
Yeah, so uh what we do, we have the advanced uh college website and there's something on there called the Pulse on College Admissions. And that's direct information from the colleges and universities, kind of like post-cycle. This is who we accepted, this is why we accepted them, percentage increases of certain groups of students and, and, you know, information about how, how, what percentage they accepted ED, in EA and all that, that stuff. So we take that and we do a year-by-year comparison and we put it on our website and we call it the Pulse on College Admissions. And it's updated in real time, so as we have information, we're updating that. And I try to, in our advisor newsletter, I try to um, you know, send out information through so that will drive people to the, to the website. So hopefully, um, if there's something really remarkable, I'll probably highlight it in a blast out to parents. But that's always a place to be checking to see um, you know, the newest information. And, and colleges are really good, they're transparent after the fact, uh, they tell us, you know, what they did and why they did it in the moment, not so much. Which is a struggle.
That helps with just future planning.
Mm-hmm. And I just wanted to kind of end, this is, this is a really um interesting piece of, of data. So this comes from the National Student Clearinghouse on College Admissions, this is specific to Byram Hills. And in the, in the timeframe of two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-two, these were the most common colleges students attended. Not applied, but attended. Um, and just one, one thing I'd like to find out on there, that SUNY Westchester Community College is listed on there. If a student en- enrolls even for one course, it's counted in this um, in this.
Which we have a lot of.
Which we have a lot of.
Um, question for you, most common, what do they mean by that?
Yes. So it's basically just number of applications.
Number of, of attending.
The number of attended students.
Others.
And they go through and they rank it from all uh seven years and they give you, I believe that's the top twenty-five colleges.
Hmm.
Interesting.
So I, I always warn, this is not your list to look at to make your list for your child, not. But if you want, if we're talking about thinking about casting a wider net, um, thinking outside of these twenty-five schools, at least for some of the colleges and universities your child applies to is probably a good idea. Because um, you know, while we do have a lot of applications to those schools, obviously students really, really want, wanna go to the schools. No surprises on there, I don't think, for us.
And then the way the guidance counselors rank the schools when they speak to the children, they have target?
Yeah, they have target reach safety.
And then there's something new that I've never seen, likely, is that above?
That's kind of a, that's kind of a target, like.
That's targets, huh?
That's a pretty likely schools, like right on target, so you can use those kind of interchangeably. I think the likelies and the targets are so hard to come up with anymore.
Right.
Oh, no.
Because of the number of applications that, you know, these colleges have seen. So I would have said, for the most part, the University of Maryland for a strong student who wants a likely target school would have been, you know, a great option. And now it's just not, you know, it's just, I know, people are laughing at me, they've been through this, it's just not. So to try to come up with that list of other schools to apply to is very difficult. So what do students do? They do what you would think they would do, they're going to apply to more colleges and universities, which is just perpetuating.
Is that okay for the guidance department though, like to, like, like to apply to so many more schools? That doesn't be a good burden or does the common app help?
It, it doesn't burden us in guidance at all, it's um, the common application allows you to apply to twenty schools on an application. And some of our students are like, what, you said twenty? I'm gonna do twenty.
I'm wondering, telling you first.
Um, but obviously we would prefer less than that, but you can so, certainly understand that the student is really struggling to figure out what is going to be, you know, an easier school for them to get into, we just don't know with great certainty anymore, so they really do have to apply to a number of schools.
And then I've never gone Naviance, so I, I don't understand, I lately heard from other parents, oh, a school is interested. They communicate through Naviance?
Sure, when you go in, um, you could like harp a school that you like that school, then ask you, do you want?
You can harp a school.
Oh my god, it's like social media.
Yes, it is.
Keep smiling face, put an angel. Okay, so you harp a school.
Promised and you can, it'll say, would you want the school to be able to communicate with you? It's about open houses and, and things like that and they can communicate through Naviance to.
You get on their mailing list. Soon your child checks Naviance also regularly.
Uh, that's a challenge.
Oh, I, I overheard this conversation, I'm like, Naviance talks back to?
Now that students are casting such a wide net, it's maybe it's twenty schools, once they get into, well, let's say they commit or they're ED, do they, the parents do a good job and I'm assuming the guidance say the top of them to make sure those students withdraw their other applications? Cause there's so many people applying to all the same schools, right?
Waiting for those. So I do send out at last three times a year, reminding parents that if your child has committed, you know, to an ED school, um, that they must withdraw their college applications and we talk about that. We will not send anything out on behalf of a student, once a student has been accepted somewhere ED, we will not send anything to any school other, you know, out there. But often we've already sent it, to be honest, so it's already out there. Um, I, I, we have to take students on the honor system because there's really no.
They're not, I can tell you.
Well, that's why, that's why I was asking like what you.
Well, cause I was setting, is there a way to go into English classes since everyone has to take English senior year, right?
It's really frustrating.
Is there a way to go in and just have the, the English teacher or, or some, some standard class that everyone takes? Just say, hey, you're so lucky, you got in like help your, help your community, help your classmates out.
Christina sends the emails, they're, they're getting it, they're getting it, they just, they wanna see.
I think that's heartbreaking, that's heartbreaking. Sometimes it becomes like a badge of courage, I mean, a badge of honor, honor, like I got into all of my schools, you know, it's like, you know.
Yeah, they wanna see what they got into, they, they, they just.
It hurts, I know, it hurts other children.
It is, it's terrible.
It's, it is tough, um, I, we do as good a job as we can, but I know, sitting in on the director of guidance uh group for all of Westchester, this is a thing.
Yeah, this is a thing. And you know, if you think about that fifty percent that got into, where was it?
Clemson.
Clemson? You know, fifty percent that got in, if they, somewhere it got in, that fifty percent might have included some of our other kids instead.
The other side of the bridge.
The EDs got in, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Any, any other surprises this year or so far trends or interesting?
They should give up.
New schools on the radar besides the.
I would say the only other thing that we're seeing an increase in is international schools, um.
Oh, you mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, we had seven students last year attend internationally and.
Is it easy for our students to app- apply to whether Canada, England, you know, wherever?
It's, it's not an easy application, so we just added it this past week, um, how to apply to schools um abroad and what the application system is for those schools and we broke it down by country. Um, because there's probably like four or five countries that our students will go to and we broke that down. And so now we have a, a ton of resources for students who do want to apply international. We've just never really had to do that, so we were always kind of like scrambling just for that one-off student. But then last year we realized, oh gosh, we really need to understand this process better to know.
And is there anything they need to do earlier so that they're ready or not, not really?
Not really, they're not really early, it's more like regular decision. The, the big takeaway from that is you have to apply for a specific major at most of these schools. It's, it's not really like where it is here, where you just go to college and you figure it out when you're there. You know, you, you, you need to go, you need to go, you know, lock it in and know what you want and make the case for it and that's it and you'll get it if you make that strong case.
Then from a student stress perspective and then just overall for the process, I mean, ED two, which has become so important, it's such probably a big part of, of your operation that it wasn't five, ten years ago?
Right.
Um, what, what are your thoughts on, on that? Not that we have any control over it, but is it, on the, at the end of the day, is it helpful or is it actually hurtful to students from an, you know, from the stress of trying to make that decision?
The, the stress is real, uh, you know, I, but I would say that, that if a student can capitalize on an ED two, typically they do, do well, they typically get in. I think, I think what we're seeing unfortunately as a trend is they'll pick a college here for ED one and get deferred and then they go here for ED two.
Mm-hmm.
So that's not, it's right.
Real Mary.
And so then you're left for the student being deferred at two different schools and really not in any colleges by the time, you know, regular decision comes about. And that's tough, so we really try to advise people if they're going to use ED two, let's be strategic about that and where you're applying. Um, but, you know, those are, those are tough conversations sometimes.
Thank you and your team for all your donations so much.
Yeah.
Christina, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for all of your support, I know you're always at all of our um counseling activities and evenings and nights, thank you.
Well, keep the, keep the videos coming, cause they're helpful with, with people who can't get to your meetings.
We have.
Had a great discussion today, Christina hosted a a college um, uh session with focused on artificial intelligence.
Oh, that's a whole other.
So.
Patrick was attended that, so it was good learning about um, the impact that's having, what you're seeing, artificial intelligence in terms of admissions. You know, with uh, you addressed the issue of writing projects.
Interesting.
I see.
Right.
Yeah, we've done this really well, that that will be coming up, you can watch that, uh, Dwayne Kevin did an amazing job.
Yeah.
And just the two things about college admissions is that um, right now, students are being interviewed by avatars at times. So you're not even having your interview with a live person, it's an AI interview.
Hey, I guess.
And um.
Right?
There's a trend.
But you can't do this seriously.
Like when you're talking to an animated.
That's horrible, it's weird, yeah.
I wanna talk to Spike Fox.
These kids get used to it, I I feel that, these kids get used to it.
They know what they wanna say.
Can you choose the avatar?
Yeah.
Can you choose the avatar?
Yeah, I I I want to go.
Your mom, so you could practice.
No, don't want you, give me that one.
I'm being young children like I.
Oh.
Gonna be there.
Oh my god. Sina, thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank you for your.
Thank you so much.
I got a quick question, uh, some, most of these are much larger uh schools than compared to Byron Hills, which is we're we're about twenty ish, twenty twenty five kids per classroom. Um, is, are kids ready to jump into larger classrooms? And students who come back um, uh, after freshman year, what is their experience going back, going to these larger schools?
Hmm.
These are much larger schooled, schools first and versus say Ithaca, which has a a smaller classroom.
Right, right, uh, you know.
Like what 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 are the kids thinking as they go in, what are the kids thinking after their freshman year?
You know, I I think they're really, they're adaptive, they're they they adapt, they're flexible, um. The luck, the good thing about our students is that they're typically able to see these schools, visit every single one of them, which is a luxury that most students are not able to do. And so they know what they're getting into, they're sitting in a class, they're visiting, you know, when class is in session and they're seeing it and, you know, really getting a sense for what they're gonna get. We don't have a lot of students who come back, although we are tracking it a little bit to see students who are asking for their transcript a year out. Um, and just trying to get some information about, you know, maybe why they moved or or didn't. But it's not typically because the size of the class, it's typically things like finances or too far away from home or something like that.
Actually, I guess, I guess what I'm concerned with is the child, the child's adjustment.
To it, hmm.
Going from Byron Hills to.
Most of the feedback we get is that kids feel that they are wholly prepared for their college experience when they go.
Academically.
Regardless.
Academically, yes, yeah.
Regardless, academically, they're prepared, well, yes.
Well, I will say, when I went to Michigan years ago, I thought it was so big and our tour guide said, you can make a huge school as small as you want.
Hmm.
So I think it's, it's, I think it's what you make of the school, and I think it's important, as you say, to go, if you have the luxury to see it, to go.
It's true. Right.
And because even though it's a huge school, unless you're taking a one on one huge lecture, even with those, they're gonna have small group settings.
Thank you Christina.
Thank you.
Christina, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much Christina, that was great.
Thank you.
And I say, hopefully you get out of here soon as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, girl, thank you.
Text Gina when you get home.
Yeah.
You got it. Twelve minutes, Gina.
That's it.
You know where I live.
That's it, I do, I'm coming.
Christina, check your timer.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, so, thank you very much, next, we're we're gonna.
Policy. Policy? Policies.
Oh, we're gonna go backwards to ten point O unfinished business. Um, ten point one, review of policies, second read, five six oh five, the student photo registration and pre-registration. And first read, fourth three one six, physical education, eight four one zero, student transportation and sixty seven hundred purchasing.
Okay, are there any questions on the uh fifty six oh five student photo registration, that's second read? I will um, talk about our first policy, forty three sixteen, physical education. We brought this back to committee as it had not been updated since two thousand six and also, uh, at that time, our existing policy had an opt out clause for those students um, that entered the high school prior to two thousand six, so that no longer is relevant and we wanted to uh update the policy. So essentially, this policy outlines the goals and objectives of the physical education program, also brought it into a more modern version of physical education, not just focusing so much on the physical health of the child, but also looking at uh positive health in terms of healthy mindset, decision making, uh pro-social behavior and emotional growth. There's a provision in there, of course, for students who are temporarily unable to participate, possibly due to a medical condition, that we provide an alternative format for them to engage. And of course, for our students with special needs who may require adaptive physical education as well. And then also, we uh changed that requirement, uh, it now outlines very clearly that all of our students in grades nine through twelve are required to take physical education every year in order to graduate. And I will say that there is one typo in the first sentence of the of the policy that we will remove uh when it goes out. We don't need two wills in there, so, are there any questions?
Yeah.
Are there any questions on this?
You know, it's fascinating, so before two thousand six, we had that flexibility.
Hmm.
Did the law change in two thousand six, do you know, or is it just the policy changed?
I just know for my home district, that continues, if you play a boxers, it's the same tonight, yeah.
A lot of, a lot of schools still have, yeah, still have it.
During that particular season, not the entire year, but during that particular season, so.
Right. Yeah.
Does that, your new provision was, was if you were playing varsity sport?
I- in my particular situation.
Yeah.
The district that I'm talking about, yeah, yeah.
But this is based, I mean, this at this point is irrelevant, right?
All right, the next uh policy is eighty four ten, student transportation, again, um, quite dated and we we had a requirement in there that we needed to include. This policy explains our responsibility to transport our students that reside in the district as well as those students who may be in foster care or temporary housing, and that was the the need for that language to be in our policy. We also provide transportation, as we very well know, to field trips and athletic events, um, after school activities and we do have the discretion, we do supply an activity bus, that we are transporting our students to private or after school activities that are not necessarily connected to the district. Uh, this policy also looks at um how we identify students in terms of assignments, um, that's just procedural, how students are assigned to specific uh buses and also provisions for such things as play dates or alternative uh bus busing if needed. Additionally, there is the maximal allowable distance from a student's home to a bus stop, that's point five uh of a mile for elementary and then one mile, uh up to one mile for secondary. And then also, there is a provision in there in terms of determining eligibility for students that are residents of the district, but they attend private school. And then finally, uh purchasing, sixty seven hundred, we approved, well, you approved this policy every year um at our organizational meeting in July. And uh, this has everything to do with um, how we purchase, what we purchase, uh bids, thresholds, um, what else am I saying?
That's good.
Competitive bidding, am I good, Kelly, alright?
Efficiency, efficiency.
And efficiency, and um, but this uh just, it came up about because Sarah Lusardi, who's our uh new purchasing agent and the business department, um, were able to bring us into um, a situation where now we can accept uh sealed bids in an electronic format.
Nice.
So we included that clause in the contract, in the policy, that's the only thing that's been uh altered in terms of bringing it back to you, but we needed au- your authorization in order to do so.
Our policy committee's been very busy.
Yeah, thank you for the policy.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to Gina and Tim and the policy committee for your time on this. And can I have a motion to approve on a second read, five six oh five, student voter registration, pre-registration and first read, forty three one six, physical education, eighty four ten, student transportation and sixty seven hundred purchasing.
So moved. Okay.
Hold your favor?
Oh, I did, I think that's bad.
Okay, moving on to staff reports.
Ta-da. So first, I'd like to talk um, a little bit about the ten pages of notes on the board's goals and your success. Of those goals to date, I did print it for every board member to look at later, because I'm only going to take a a sort of cursory discussion about this right now. Uh, but for the first board goal and excellence in teaching and learning, particularly about new curriculum implementation and innovation in teaching and learning, um, just so much work has been done and at the head of all of this has been Tim Colton-Ecker. So Tim, regarding our K five literacy curriculum instructional practices assessments, uh, we have a a detailed literacy goals now set up. We had three literacy consultants supporting implement and implementing uh research-based practices. Tim has developed in-service courses aligned with those literacy goals. Uh, we have various learning experiences that are going to take place on the March fifteenth Superintendent Conference Day. Uh, Peggy is engaging in a book read with her faculty and that is on literacy and the research involved in literacy. Um, we also reviewed and piloted a phonological and phonemic awareness program in kindergarten and we are looking to study its use in grade one. So Tim met with all the kindergarten teachers to to go through that work starting in last summer and they've had the training in the phonological awareness program and they're now piloting its use in the classroom and next year, they're gonna do the full year pilot in the classrooms. Uh, there were a lot of decodable texts that were ordered for specific students who needed to update that library and also an additional review of many textbooks. Uh, we also piloted a word study program with grammar vocabulary instruction in grades four and five, so teachers attended the workshops on that. As you know, our um special education department has been really working on that sequence for Orton-Gillingham practice in the program and I'm so proud that we have lesson plans that are aligned to foundations in the curriculum in K to three um, and additional additional lessons, but also, we have special education teachers enrolled in the year-long program, ten of them who are now seeking training to be certified and OG trained, and that's really high level coursework.
Practicum and it's monitored by an outside mentor on a monthly basis, it's really intense.
And we're gonna offer it again next year for any interested teachers and additional advanced OG training. And we have a lot of other professional learning opportunities for literacy literacy instruction, we offered four in-service courses in the fall. Uh, the winter, spring, the district is offering three in-service courses. And um, all probationary year teachers in years two to four are also having some instruction on this facilitated by a consultant. Eighteen teachers are taking that course and then, as I said, on Superintendent Conference Day, they're going to to take place in there. Uh, we also have a newly implemented advanced learners program at the elementary level, thanks to Tim and everybody who has been working with Tim to develop the curriculum for the advanced learners in math. Um, and they have pullout and collaboration in classrooms with teachers, draft criteria for who should be involved in that pullout program and what it should include. And an expert consultant is collaborating with those classroom teachers at grades three and four, so that we have differentiation in the classroom and enrichment is not just a pullout activity.
And if I can just add that that consultant who's working at the elementary is a consultant who's been working in our middle school for ten years.
Please.
So she knows our curriculum really well and she knows where we need to get kids in the middle school. So she's now coming and working with our classroom teachers um now at Wampus, it's really great.
That's great.
She's.
And we're also looking at diagnostic assessments in math and piloting two intervention programs. So we looked at the eva- uh various math intervention programs, we're currently piloting Bridges and Do the Math K five. And in August, they met with classroom teachers to just really review these programs and the mid-year evaluation of the programs in January indicated that there's pretty good feedback about it uh for both programs and they're gonna continue to pilot next year. And we also have a very similar assessment audit happening in ELA. Um, where Tim has been convening the MTSS design teams, the multiple tiered system of support with K five teachers and literary assessment audit, um, uh, just a ton of work has been happening there. Uh, piloting a sci- science program at K five, I walked into a classroom with Kelly today and they were doing the solar system and they were talking about, what is his?
Fourth grade.
What's his name, Adam?
I have no Adam.
No Adam?
It's the name of the curriculum.
It's the name of the curriculum and the kids were talking about, you know, Adam, you know.
Yeah. That's hysterical.
Yes, um, it was, it was great. Uh, for six twelve, uh, we've been.
You should tell them about the um kid that discovered the planet.
Oh.
Yes, what was his name, Daniel, was it Daniel?
We should.
I think so.
Daniel.
That'd be inspiring.
Oh my god, I see, I have to look at it. Starts with Rowan, maybe, Rowan, is that his name?
Yeah, I'm gonna discover the planet.
Yeah, yeah, see, yes.
People.
He graduated like five, went to the state, started working.
Yeah.
Yeah, they made.
Was it, wasn't it? There was a Daniel.
Stephanie, do you want to take a go text?
Uh-huh.
Ah, okay.
Here he is, hold on, seventeen year old.
Yeah.
Rowan.
Rowan, Daniel Rowan.
Dominic Rowan.
Dominic Rowan, I'm so close.
Something like.
Maybe he'll come back when the eclipse comes and and help out with that.
We have seal of civic readiness, seal of biliteracy, uh, the tri-state consortium evaluation coming up for science, all the work that's come behind that. The DVT training, thank you to dialectical behavior training, it is how to to train students about how to respond to different situations. Um, and Colleen has really been doing, and Colleen O'Connor, an amazing job on that with her teachers and Chris Walsh and bringing that um to us.
My entire six through eight faculty will be trained on Superintendent Conference Day. And earlier this year, we were training our special art service providers, psychologists, um, um, social workers and guidance counselors.
Is that part of like a social emotional learning?
Yeah, and it's behavioral management, you know, how to help students sort of calm down when they're reacting to something.
All the teachers are gonna be trained, not just special, special ed teachers.
Every single.
That's great, it's interesting.
Then, we need that reciprocation of giving very concrete tools to classroom teachers and how to respond to a student who might get really stressed and react to a situation.
Yeah.
How we can use a few techniques to calm them down, we've found a really great uh uh organization that's helping us with that.
Is that K through six?
Great tool.
Um, we are exploring it, K six, so we did a needs assessment earlier this year, K six, and then we're evaluating that needs assessment right now
K through twelve.
with Meredith and Peggy and they, to see what we want to do next year.
Between that and the recent work on cognitive load, we should be okay.
Yeah, cognitive load theory, we've been.
Just really, just watching, watching how they learn and, you know, sometimes the stress comes from an overburdened cognitive load, right?
No shots.
It's great.
It's important.
So we have to think about that.
So we've been studying that as administrative council.
How do you process it as a student, how do we process it as educators? Um, so much happening, uh, K to twelve also, well, at the high school startup, the teachers trained on the year two curriculum. We have uh Chris Walsh convening the grading committee and they're studying a book, Grading for Equity, together as a high school faculty. Um, review of the MTSS program that I talked about that Tim is doing. And then um, K twelve curriculum and instruction decisions, the artificial intelligence work that the board has been privy to already, the character education work that Gina has shared with us as well. Um, and the review of the art music programs with the new director of fine art, it's Mark Beja. He's really been doing a good job of surveying, looking at how to better um serve the kids in the capacity in fine arts. He sent a survey out, what I like about Mark is he sent a survey out to see if we might be better serving students by doing a pullout program for music early in the morning. And based upon the feedback, he he's good enough to say, that feedback is not compelling and we'll pause, we may revisit this at another time, but this is feedback that is conflicting, so we want a way to make sure that we're doing the right thing for students. Um, data to inform practice, we have data teams who have been reviewing branching minds. The MTSS will be modeling the use of that in the mid-year I'm ready data, so we're really going to start to see, um, we're looking for a universal screener for students making a lot of progress in that data. Um, getting to, I covered a lot with social emotional learning, but you could see all of the training that's been happening there, outlined specifically.
Can I jump in, uh, and just go back a second, the uh, the work that Chris is doing on the grading equity? I feel like we have to explain that a little bit, because.
Equity is a big word.
It's a big word and and in this day and age, it's, I think, it makes people nervous.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure that we clarify that, it's, we're talking about, so within Byron Hills, teacher A, teacher B are graded in the same way.
Sure, sure.
And grading makes you nervous too, both words.
Yes.
Yes, grading equity, together, nervous words.
Yeah, so it's equitable equitable practices, so here's an example, so say Scott and I both teach AP Calculus, just use that one for us. And if we wanna make sure that the kids have the same probability of getting a grade in my class as they would Scott's class, and that's equitable practices. So if we're grading really different, I could weight things differently and maybe grade certain things, so a kid in my class might get a C, but if if they were taking Scott's class and had the same grades, would get a B because he grades differently. That to us is an equitable practice. So we're looking at, exploring, how do we grade, why do teachers make decisions about grading and how we can get some uniformity, but still let teachers have autonomy over their grading. So the goal this year is just to start conversations and get teachers to be self-aware of the student experience. So imagine a student going through a high school where they have eight different teachers and eight different grading practices to figure out. And then maybe their friends who have the same courses, but different teachers have different practices, is that equitable? So that's what we mean by equitable.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
I'm I'm, and Chris is really good at this, um, but at some point, I would imagine that the student voice in that is important too.
Yes, he has, um, Chris is very good at involving students and he has a student advisory group and he brings these things to students as well. But we need to bring, with this conversation, he's bringing teachers in first.
Fair enough.
Then students will come into that conversation, yeah. So this will be a multi-year um approach, but his goal this year is some common language around it and a reflection on teachers to start thinking about why they're making the decisions they're making, like do I grade homework or not grade homework and why, what's my rationale?
I think they need to stop using equity, they maybe use it. They maybe use it uniformly, you used to uniformity, that would be a better word.
Uniformity, yeah, so that was just based on a book we read. It's actually the title of the book.
Title of the book.
I just feel like it's.
Project development, who's a real leader in this.
Yes, causes a lot of confusion.
Exactly, right.
It's an interesting topic, but we're, what, ten, twelve people on the table? We're each going to look at something and, and see something different. It's just who we are, we're human.
So that's what we're doing. And I think um, in our community, people, you know, Chris is very good at explaining this. He's been very open about it in principals' coffees, he's talked about it. So hopefully we're educating our community enough that they understand the rationale to what we're exploring and why we're exploring it. But thanks for bringing that up.
That's good, man.
I got the same reaction, you know.
Um, next is cybersecurity and we've had the benefit of having Kevin Gudati present to us. So we know what's happening there with AI and with site and just security in general. Uh, fiscal accountability and communications, you know, Kelly has been talking about the plans that he's putting into place for the electrification of buses. Um, capital projects that we're working on through lights, learning action. Solar options on the district-owned land, continuing to monitor that. Looking at the five-year forecast, we did a very big deep dive in our working session for budget. Um, just a lot of work that's happening there and Kelly's continued work with Nicer. Um, and attending multiple webinars, et cetera, to figure out and make sure that we are doing everything the way that we can, following housing developments, following enrollment. And then our leadership development, um, just continuing the good work there with faculty and providing mentoring to new teachers. This is a lot of Gina's work, uh, with the mentoring program and then Gina and Tim and teachers in years two to four. And um, facilitating all of these advisory groups that help support teachers within. We have quite a few teachers who are now going for their administrative degrees. Um, and also teachers who are taking on other things like, you know, ENL certifications or additional certifications. We're seeing a lot of that as well. So I will say to the board, um, good job. And, and we want to go home and, and read in its entirety, all of the bullets that go into everything that we set out as the goals in the beginning of the year and how we've been monitoring, verifying that. Um, really pretty spectacular.
That was a great overview. Thank you, excellent summary.
Been busy, thank you.
Been busy. And now, ladies and gents, our student highlights. Woo, we have a lot. All right, Daniel, I mean, you're going to see his name every third day. Um, just as he has been named twenty twenty-four Presidential Scholar candidate. This is absolutely outstanding. Um, congratulations. We wish him the best of luck as he continues on in this selection process and he's just been outstanding. Speech and debate team updates, this is January thirteenth. They, they were in the NYCFL Sister Raymond Memorial Tournament. And in the declamation speech, Agni Sudaram dazzled with a stellar fifth place. India Edwards, third place. And Emmy Nagura claimed second place. And on Saturday, January twenty-seventh, they participated in another invitational in Baskin Ridge. And these are the highlights of that, um, and they placed seventh out of fifty-two, fifty-two schools? Yeah, fifty-two schools. Pretty amazing, congratulations to our students. Um, here are speech and debate updates. Uh, they also proud to have established middle school speech and debate team during the last year. Uh, support from Chris Caliendo, he's fantastic. Um, he's also a very good basketball player at the Harlem Wizards on Sunday. Uh, they formed this club in September and they participated in the middle forum debate for the first time. And they placed third, fourth and sixth, pretty awesome. Global scholars collaborate with the HCC on the UNSGDG contest. This is where they assess their peers' work on the Sustainable Development Goals webpage and the MAP contest. And the sixth graders developed this website supporting the importance of the UN goals. And they did their PSAs on those and they, kids at the high school gave the middle schoolers feedback on their writing for the website. So we just love seeing these global scholar students working with the HCC students. And.
We're going to play a video?
We did this last time.
We did not last year.
No, no, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm so sorry.
I, I would like to, it's probably.
I'm going to keep going. I love that, Karen. Okay, um, we did this too last time, am I? Were we somehow? We did this too, I think we're somehow in the wrong something. No, I'm definitely not.
I will say, I overheard Mamma Mia tonight when I was in the high school.
Karen, I'm so excited.
Amazing.
How amazing. We did all that. We did these last time. I have them on here. I just sent it to you. Maybe?
This is the same one. I think maybe a chump, let me see.
If we've got basketball. I could do it all, we could just do it.
I know, we have the rep lines on your computer.
Oh, here we.
Here we are, yeah. What happened?
Let me go back and see where we are. There we go.
Oh, yeah, the merit.
Yeah, okay. So we have our national merit finalists, our six students who became national merit finalists.
Amazing.
And they'll compete for scholarships for up to twenty-eight million dollars, congratulations. Upstate Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, I mean, just unbelievable work at SUNY Albany. Um, we have a bunch of students who presented their work as speakers and some presented posters. Um, and this was really great. Um, Ben and Abby secured second place in their categories and then Rocky's outstanding presentation earned him first place in one of the five speaker rooms. He spoke to over three hundred individuals in that room.
He won in his room and then he had to do another presentation as a result of winning, which is amazing.
What a prize, right?
And then he goes on, right? That's amazing.
Yeah, he goes on. Really proud of him.
And then we have three students' artworks showcased in the ceramics exhibition. Uh, this is pretty outstanding. This was among over, close to twelve hundred entries. Um, that they were featured in Richmond, Virginia. And it was like a very big situation to get these ceramics pieces there. Take a look at Eve Nepo's, um, Summer Fang and Carissa Chung's. They were just beautiful and they were in our own art exhibit as well here.
Beautiful.
Phenomenal. Uh, all district music festivals, I think I showed this the last time. No, I didn't.
Not this one, no.
Not this music festival.
I haven't seen this, this isn't.
Okay, so all, I see it so much, I don't know what I've seen and not seen. Um, all right, so February fourteenth to sixteenth, they had three different days for all district music festivals. Thank you for the PTSA, for supporting this really great work that the students did. Um, and you could see that we had students, like our seniors, um, and high school students were working with the younger students in small groups. And it was really playful and fun day to enjoy and celebrate music. So um, just coming together with the smaller, younger students and seeing what the older students have been working on and doing was pretty spectacular. And Science Olympiad, holy cow. Uh, in February, our Science Olympiad teams, um, for the Lower Hudson Valley Regional Performance, we had medals on the A-team. Um, just, Tom, you'll see a lot of names there that you've seen before. And then on March second, the sixth and eighth grade students showcased their skills at Science Olympiad. There was a, a text chain, uh, an email chain going around in Byram Hills involving the teachers at the middle school. Deb Kay is the Science Department Chair, um, Corinne at the middle school. Also, um, Dennis at the high school, Dennis Covert, who was jumping in to help out with that. Just a lot of cross-building support for these kids in their events, the tower event, the air trajectory, the flight event. Uh, Jack Quinn, this is where we get little gremlins in my. Jack Quinn, the Golden Dozen recipient, unbelievable. Prestigious Golden Dozen, recognizing top twelve football student athletes on the field, in the classroom and in their community. That's pretty outstanding. Uh, we had varsity hockey, regional champions of what I'm game. And the team moves on to the state frozen four this weekend, this weekend. And are going to play.
It smells cold.
In the state semifinals on March ninth, so.
Is that the one in Buffalo?
That's in Buffalo. They play Saturday at four thirty and if they win Saturday, then they play at two thirty on Sunday. And in Buffalo.
Do they drive up there?
They are taking a coach bus up there. Rob Castagna and the coach are going to be riding the bus up there. And then we are flying a couple of other adults to supervise that whole activity. And um, I will be watching it and anybody else can watch it by getting a subscription. You can watch it on Saturday and if they win, I will be um, jetting up there on Sunday to see. And if I'm not jetting up there, which I assume I hope will be, then I will be coaching the Harlem Wizards on Sunday. So I'm either going to be in a car or on a plane to Buffalo or coaching.
Hockey or basketball.
Yeah. And then varsity boys' basketball, it was so difficult, the game this week, they lost by one point. It was really to the very last seconds of the game. It was such a hard fought game and.
They lost by one point, that's so brutal.
Yes, they lost by one point. And, and really, um, it was upsetting to them, but what, how proud we are of them. And it's nothing to be upset about after the initial pains are over.
It came so far.
They have come so far and they really did an outstanding job. And what a great team together and excellent coaching. Um, I also want to thank Rob Castagna and Scott Saunders and Brett Alcantara for everything that they've been doing in all of these postseason. Remember, we're revving up for new seasons as they're also helping to finish out these post-seasons. And Mamma Mia, which will be Thursday night, Friday night and two times on Saturday for anyone who wants to go and want to do the promo, Tim.
I will say, I heard.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're four nights and four nights over. Let's give it up for Donna and the Dynamo.
Wow. I love it.
Great costumes.
Great costume, great casting and um, you know, our kids are so talented. I, I went to see Mean Girls in Peekskill and six of our students were in that production and they're in this production too. I mean, these are kids who are really.
And it is a lot of work.
It's a lot. You guys know.
Is it Meg Waxman and Jennifer Nipo? I mean, they're just, I just saw them, so they're just doing everything, they're so amazing. They've done such a good design.
Just in from the presses, mock trial won tonight.
That's fantastic. Right before Go Bobcats. Hey, I can say it, now say it.
Terrific, say it again, Larry, in case anybody, sorry, the mock trial team will advance, they won tonight.
I mean, there really are, we were here how many weeks ago? Two weeks ago?
Yeah, exactly.
So much happens in the, in the course of two weeks with our kids and so many opportunities for them to be highlighted. I'm just grateful for everybody's work with them.
More updates?
More updates?
Updates, so. Oh, this is my favorite.
That's a tough album, huh?
Yeah, it's got. Um, my report is an update on AP Physics. Um. I'll tell you to sing it. Okay, here we go, so. I'm not, I'm not singing or dancing.
AP Physics.
We'll tell everybody AP Physics. So, as you know, the college board periodically reviews uh, their curricula in the AP courses. And what they do is they get feedback from universities on students who go through APs and how they perform. You know, at the entry level courses that they take or if they um, get placed out of courses. So um, based on that input, they want to make sure that the high school curriculum is aligned to what the college expectations are. So they undertook a review several years ago of AP Physics. And there are four AP Physics courses and I'll talk about that review. Then I'll talk about that, how that's impacting our curriculum. So they started a few years ago reviewing AP Physics one and AP Physics two. Those are like two, each a semester's worth of content at the college level. And then they revise the exams to each of those. And currently what they've been working on is AP Physics C. There are two courses there, there's um, magnetism and there's uh, mechanics and there is electricity and magnetism. So M or ENM is easier to say. And then they're revising the exams and the goal was they are aligning the exams so that they all have the same format and the same length. They used to be different and they used to have an exam that was both M and ENM together. And they've now made those each separate exams and revised the curriculum to make them more focused on the content uh, for students to get a better foundation. So the exams are all longer, so there's ninety minutes.
Fantastic.
Yay.
So talking about test optional and things, let's just make them longer. So ninety minutes um, on multiple choice and ninety minutes on free response and the exams are three hours, that's each. And they align. It is a lot of time. So they did align all the exams, so all four physics exams now have the exact same format. And they added more items, the rationale, so that they could better assess the skills and knowledge that are important, that colleges felt they needed to have that understanding. Um, the new Physics C exams will be uh, administered in next spring. So we needed to start making adjustments and thinking about how it's going to impact our curriculum. So I'll talk about that in a moment. Um, so as a result, we're, we're making changes to our AP Physics C curriculum. So this, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask how, the three hours compares to the other AP exams, I can't remember.
I think the exams are somewhere in that, I think they have up to three hours, I don't know if they all take that long, but that's how much they have allotted. I think they're about three hours.
So that's standard.
Yeah, so it's standard. The, the main change was in that Physics C where they had, you were able to do mechanics and the um, electricity and magnetism together. And now you can't do that, they have to be separate exams. Tim, does this have anything to do with the changes to AP Physics? Not to, to Physics one not being an AP course? And does this make it now easier to make it an AP course or does it have no bearing on that? Right, so that's our decision, right, the local decision, this is all AP college board decisions. Right, but, but one of the reasons was that one wasn't really progressing to see the right way? Right, so I'll talk about that in a moment. On my last slide, I'll talk about our progression and the rationale for what we're doing. Yeah, thanks. So uh, Deb Kay, the chairperson of the Science Department, has been working with her physics teachers over the last few years to look at the curriculum. Um, conducting a gap analysis uh, with what the college board expectations are, with what our curriculum is and making adjustments accordingly. We also were looking at the impact. So we asked Christina and her department, because we were wondering about which AP Physics C should we offer? Should we offer mechanics or should we offer the ENM, um, AP and does it matter? We did have a plan, one of our options was to offer both. But we feel like our enrollment doesn't warrant it, we're too small to offer like an AP Physics one or two and then offer both M and ENM. We just don't have the. Also, there's a lot of the science research students would be. Exactly. And, and it pulls them, you can't do everything. If we didn't have science research, we probably would have a more like robust or more offerings in the physics department. But a lot of those kids end up doing their research and science research instead. So, and we're also looking at the alignment with mathematics, because Physics C is a calculus-based course. So you have to be taking calculus concurrently. Or I've had it previously, most students are taking it at the same time. Um, so we had Christina reach out to universities because we were wondering about which C to offer since we knew we couldn't offer both. And the general feedback, and I put in an exact quote from MIT, which was the, the feedback from all ten universities that she reached out to. Which is they don't have a firm requirement on which physics course to take. They just say they encourage students to pursue coursework that will serve as a strong academic foundation. So any physics course is what they're looking for in that it's a strong curriculum. So that's what's really driving our curriculum decisions, is how do we make sure we have the best program to give kids the strongest foundation and the basics.
They also can't say anything because they don't know that what anybody offers.
Right now, yeah, yeah, so they don't, and that's, yeah. Right. So, and we were reaching out specifically to colleges regarding their engineering programs. You know, just specifically for engineering majors, do you require any particular? Like, no, just have a strong foundation and take some course.
What I see, both of my sons went to an engineering school and they had kids who came from very different backgrounds who took this calculus or that calculus. We took physics.
Right, and I actually have some quotes from that university.
And they just all get placed in, in different levels of the same type courses.
Some schools give BC calculus in junior year. And then other, and then multivariable, and then other schools um, don't have BC calculus.
Right.
Yeah, they want students taking any advanced coursework in any STEM class and that's what they look for for engineering majors. So that was sort of nice to hear that it doesn't matter, let's just give our students the best program that we're able to offer. So what we're doing, um, I'll talk about the, the different courses we offer in physics. We do have a physics concepts, which is a project-based physics course. And then we have a regions-level physics. Um, and then we offer Physics A, which we're going to keep advanced physics. And the reason we feel we want to keep advanced physics is because, um, as opposed to the AP curriculum, is we can bring in the foundation that's going to be needed then for AP Physics C, mechanics. And we're going to do the mechanics course and exam. Um, and then we can have a really strong foundation. And then we can have a really strong foundation and go deeper than we were able to in previous years with just the mechanics content. Because we were doing both mechanics and electricity and magnetism in one year and kids were taking the combined exam. So, now we can go deeper and we feel that that's what colleges want, is a strong, solid foundation and some advanced studies work in physics. So, physics A, we're able to bring in topics that are in also physics one and two. So, it's really combined content from physics one and two that feed into the mechanics course.
So, can I ask you prerequisites?
Go ahead, I'll ask another question after you.
Are these prerequisites for AP?
So, if you're taking mechanics, AP Physics C, you probably should be taking physics A. Not that we won't consider a kid who took physics if for some reason they're advancing and we feel like they do have the mathematics strength. So, maybe they're an AP Calc BC kid who, um, also is really interested and motivated in science could take the C, mechanics. What we're doing in physics A, although that's not an AP, technically an AP course, we are allowing students to, to opt to take the AP exam if they wish. We have about six or seven students every year who do take that option.
I was just wondering, Tim, I'm sorry, can I just ask you, the physics concepts versus the regular physics? Was, were those always the options that we had and what are the differences?
They were.
Yes.
Are they different grade levels?
It had a different title, we did change the name of it, but it is for students that don't want the rigor of a regents level course. And it's more project based for students who might not be real strong in the algebra. We still require algebra in it, but the regular regents physics requires a lot of algebra and strengthen algebra skills.
Understood.
Do they have to take the regents?
Um, no, we don't offer the regents in physics. We, we got rid of all of our advanced regents except required regents exams, but it's regent level content that ends in an exam that is like a regents exam.
And the guidance counselor will meet with our, with our students and recommend.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, just based on student interest.
And I know, I know when they went through chemistry, the chemistry teacher usually met and, and gave them feedback.
Yes.
So, after chemistry, whatever they take.
They have those discussions about what's gonna be best.
They'll have those discussions, uh, you know.
Absolutely, what's the best option for them?
It still isn't.
Right, right. We also, as we do the AP Physics C mechanics course, we're gonna create a Google classroom for independent work in the E and M content. Should a student wanna study that independently and our physics teachers will support those students during office hours. So, we're gonna have that as an option, I don't know how many students will take it, we're gonna experiment with that over the next couple of years and see if that is interesting. And there's a lot of good resources on the college board site and some other free resources where we can create video tutorials for every con, you know, for the units of study. So.
Would it be worthwhile for somebody who wanted to go an engineering route to maybe partner with a, a college? If, if we're gonna order, definitely offer mechanics to maybe, I, you said a lot of students, maybe you can just take one class at WCC. Wouldn't it be worthwhile to have a partnership?
Yeah, it's certainly something to look at, I just, I wanna keep in mind our challenge success work and not trying to put too much on our kids and keep the level of learning.
No, I just, I understand, but sometimes, you know, if it's not given.
Absolutely, if students wanted to, but there isn't really a need, if they're taking the most advanced course that we offer, that's again what colleges look for. Are you taking the most challenging and rigorous content that you can in high school? So, if you're an engineering major, you know, you're probably in one of the AP Calc courses, you're probably, you know, you're taking, um, the physics, AP physics courses. Um, and you might have some CompSci or something.
Is it the second year of physics A, is that, is that right?
It's, um.
Is it two years that we've had it, that we changed it?
Physics, um, this is our second year, I believe.
So.
Yes, three years ago they had eight.
So, you, I don't know if you have enough data yet to know, but for the kids that discuss, this is really the one spot in our curriculum where we removed an AP, I don't think, right? And so, the question is for those that sit for the exam, are they prepared? Do they do well or as well as a senior's gonna do? Cause we, maybe a lot of seniors that.
Because typically they would do AP Physics one and AP Physics two before taking the AP Physics.
C.
C, but before taking, they would take two AP Physics exams.
Right.
In both of those, so we're really in physics A, getting them ready for the AP Physics one exam, but not the two.
Right, exactly, there's not enough content for two to have that offered.
Fair enough.
There's some topics that are related to the mechanics specifically that we want to integrate into that advanced course.
But they sit for one, I mean, does it put like undue burden on them to go out and, you know, get tutoring and do tremendous amount of work?
Yeah, they sit.
Or is it, is it substantial enough in the course that they have?
Substantial enough, yeah, I think it is. And there's supplementary material that we do as well that they, the teachers have and maybe also a Google classroom for that as well.
Okay, cause I mean, I think at the time that we were talking about that, that was the big thing that was on, I know, a number of community members like minds. Because they were concerned, they, they didn't wanna give up that AP if they weren't going to see. Cause if you're going to see, then it's less of an issue, but if you're not going to see, which many students might not, then, um, you still want a physics AP. But if you're allowing them to sit for the test and the course is covering it, then maybe it's.
And we're supporting them for the test, it's.
Yeah.
Exactly, if you recall, the reason we switched to AP Physics one was based on the curriculum. And then it was during the pandemic that the college board changed the content of AP Physics one. And then they never went back, they announced that they weren't going back to the original content of AP Physics one. And we didn't like that change, cause we didn't feel it fed into Physics C the way we wanted it to. And what the college board wants you to do is offer AP Physics one and AP Physics two.
And two, you don't have enough time for that.
And then offer both Cs, so that's what the, the college board wants you to take more.
Great, if the kids are taking physics starting in sophomore year.
Yeah, so they don't really want you jumping from AP Physics one to AP Physics C, cause they're losing money, they want you to take more AP courses. So, we weren't happy with that change in, after the pandemic, so we felt, let's go back to physics A. And that was the decision we made curriculally, that makes sense to us.
Just to Scott's point, I know that you said we took away an AP class, but we added a bunch, we added AP and virus science.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just don't, I just don't want the community to think that we have less than what they, what we started with.
We're taking away.
We just created other forms of AP sciences that.
Right, yeah, no, fair point, I mean.
And other options.
I just meant like that, there was an AP course that's no, it's the same course, it's not like we took away a course, the course is still there, it's just not an AP.
It's called physics A and you can take the AP or you can opt not to, but you don't have to end the class with the AP.
And we only had it for one, for two or three years, we had AP Physics one, based on what we knew the curriculum to be. And then after the pandemic, they changed that content and we weren't happy with that change. So, it was because of that curriculum change, it wasn't something we've had forever that we're taking away.
But there really still are two opportunities for kids to take the AP Physics exam.
Exactly, right.
One more.
Yeah.
And in AP Physics C, you will have to take the exam.
I'm adding an AP sign.
Right.
That's a designated course, kids have to sit for the AP Physics C exam.
But our choice makes.
Exactly. And then our annual egg drop in Mr. Covert's class.
Yeah!
So, students design, um, their physical structure to protect the egg when they drop it, so, they're such students with various designs. They love doing that. Thank you.
My flag is.
He's been a wonderful addition to our, um, staff.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Covert. He's always at, he re, he attends other school functions all the time, it's right.
Is it boarding events?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Uh, the, uh, the, um, they'll be at the plays and every night, yeah.
Yes.
We're just doing the baseball.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
He did a good job following Mama Mia.
Jana Curry.
And even without, even without the singing and dance.
I am the dancing queen, we all, that's my second name.
Any board reports?
I do.
Alright, yeah, I do also.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick one, um, from the PTSA exec board meeting, uh, they have a lot going on. They, uh, in the works, they have a PTSA community event at Wampus. It's a multicultural event for the Wampus families.
Bless you.
Bless you. They have, um, thirty cultures represented and over seventy families have signed up to bring food and performances and so all the Wampus kids will be able to walk around to different tables and enjoy learning that.
Did they have any cultures represented, thirty?
Over, they have thirty cultures and over seventy families sign up, some families are doing multiple cultures, which is sort of a nice representation.
That's great. They'll have enough people there even if nobody shows up.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Right.
They're always such a great event and they, they used to do this.
Cause there are a lot of people who are participating.
And that's May tenth on, it's a Friday night. And they also, uh, the PTSA, um, exec board is in the process of filling some of their committee chair positions, um, and other positions for next year. Among them, co-chair, uh, fundraising, sustainability team, some other positions. So, they've asked for any community member who's interested to get in touch with the PTSA, you can contact Maria Lise, who is the president, fantastic.
She's great. Yeah, and I encourage people to do that, they are incredible partners.
And, um. Fantastic.
To us endorsing the, the proposed project at the high school. As a matter of fact, there are members on the, uh, PTSA who are alumni, who are gonna be docents. And when we do our community nights, right, to say, yeah.
Their involvement's incredible and they put in so much time and work, so we appreciate that, of course.
They're, it's unbelievable.
So, anyone who wants to volunteer should contact Maria Lise.
Well, the PTSA and the BHF has been a great pipeline for the board as well.
Incredible.
So, BHF, um, have an update there, um, they had a meeting recently and, um, well, this Sunday is the, um, Harlem Wizards again, which is just always such an popular event.
So excited.
But he has a great time. And they're just, um, full steam ahead on a number of grants, um, the pipeline was really good, so there were, there were a number of grants that were talked about at the meeting. And, um, gearing up for the, for the big project. And then, um, also an update on the West Front, on West Justified from School Boards Association. In addition to, um, the meetings around, um, the budget and Albany and all the legislators, which has really been most of the last, um, two to three weeks. There are two things coming up, uh, one of which on March eighth is a state aid Zoom, for any board member that wants to attend.
Oh, boy.
Just a tutorial on state aid, um, which is helpful. And then, March eighteenth is a seven PM curriculum discussion.
I'm gonna do that.
And that, I think a number of people already signed up.
I signed up on that one, I'm interested in that.
Yep, so those are the, those are the two upcoming events that we have.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
We also had on, uh, last week, Friday.
Mm-hmm.
We, uh, we had the athletic advisory committee, um, Scott Saunders did a great job. Uh, the focus was on the, um, merge, merge teams. And, uh, you know, the purpose and the, and the, and some of the intricacies of, of having work, of these mergers, um, that we really had, you don't even realize are going on behind the scenes, it was really a very interesting conversation.
And a lot goes into creating those mergers and, and a lot of energy and time.
Yes, yes.
And sometimes it might be two of our kids who were playing in that merge team, but they're getting the opportunity to play the sport they want.
Yeah. Well, it turned out that, that Byram actually leads, is the lead school on the majority.
That stood out to me, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the majority of our merge teams.
Had a, six out of seven of the merge teams that Byram Hills is the leader.
Yeah, that we were actually the lead school.
Interesting.
In organization.
Which was very exciting.
So, that, that, you know, kudos to, uh, Scott and Rob for heading that up and coordinating.
Yeah.
That, and I believe the rules have changed that after this year, only individuals or individual teams within the merge team can, um, go on to the finals, not a team. So, that was the big.
Yeah, merge, merge teams cannot qualify for, um, research, regional.
Exactly.
Like, sectionals, sectionals, regionals.
Sectionals and, and regionals.
Yeah.
And then the fast.
Individual athletes can qualify.
Yeah. And individual teams, like, it's a relay team.
Yeah.
And then, um, the, the, the women, the female athletes, no, not only the, the female athlete, um, fast.
Oh, fast, feminized.
So, they're doing a program that, um, that the sport that, um, Rob and Scott are, are really excited about.
Oh.
They're gonna try to bring, um, all the female team, athletic teams and have the male teams support them and have the community come and just do a whole day around youth sports.
They're, the, the girls are trying to work on sort of building up the pipeline and, and creating a level of excitement and enthusiasm at the younger levels, um, to get involved in, in some of the, the, the sport.
I think that's in May?
Yeah, that's kind of what's going on.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna split up the turf field into four quadrants, football, soccer, lacrosse.
Mm-hmm.
What was the other one? The softball, I suppose.
Well, they were, they were, they were reaching out to a bunch of the other, they were focusing on the spring team, on the spring sports. But they were also gonna be trying to, to pull in some of the other, um, females, uh, teams to, to be represented and have like little clinics or games going on, maybe in the gyms and stuff. This group is fantastic, I mean, it was started, I think, two years ago, they said, by a group of students who went to Mr. Walsh and said,
It is, it was fantastic.
we, we wanna increase the visibility of female athletes and increase the profile and they've, it's, it's an impressive group of kids, I can tell you.
And go full force ahead.
It's awesome.
And then lastly, we spoke about leadership and the qualities in youth sport that are really important for resilience. And it was, it was a great lead in, into that Monday presentation.
Mm-hmm.
From the sports alliance, was it the coaches alliance? About sportsmanship and how to behave at, um, events. And I think our students generally know how to behave. I think that there's been a lot of incidences from other schools and it was, it was, it's also our school, okay? So, um, but the, but the coach alliance, it was very nice that they came and had that program on Monday for all our student athletes.
Good, thank you. Thank you. And, uh, communications to the board.
Yes, the, the board and the superintendent received a communication from a local legislator, um, regarding the district calendar and regarding curriculum.
That's it. Thank you, Tim, anybody else?
It doesn't require a response, it's, um, just a, you know, request and information, yeah.
Information. Anybody else? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from February sixth? Um, we have apps, uh, we have Lara and Melissa were, we're absent.
We're absent.
February sixth?
Yeah, so, yeah, and so, I think.
I'm gonna, I'm.
It's about being abstained.
You abstain, you will abstain.
I abstain, yeah.
You will abstain.
So, can I have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, abstains?
Abstained or two.
Thank you.
Next.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No.
So, second, all in favor? Alright, so, good, everybody, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Wallace.
We have to see your resume.